America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every and justice for all.
Before I ask for rule call, I'd like to introduce J T Walker. He is now the councilman of Ward one. He takes, uh, will, uh, remain there until at least the end of the year, taking Steve Hose's place as he resigned and he is now the clerk treasurer for the city of Clinton. So welcome.
Thank you.
Rule call, please.
Uh, James T Walker?
Here.
John, uh, would you prefer being called J T or James T?
Uh, J T is called.
J T, okay. John Lor?
Here.
Dean Strong?
Here.
Bart Moody?
Here.
Marty Shortridge?
Yep.
Does anyone have any questions on the minutes of the past meeting? Did we get a financial packet last month? Did we get a financial packet last?
No. We just acknowledged receipt of one, but it wasn't correct. Or wasn't finalized. That he asked us to say yes, that we have received something, so we have received something. I think it wasn't updated. So we were, we accepted the receipt of the packet but not approving the appropriations. Is this a better way to put it?
Table.
Yeah.
Table.
See, right there. I'm tabled. Right back overboard.
And let's see, it says right under their councilman board, no, they had received a financial packet, we didn't get a packet.
This second month.
You guys got some accounts payable, everyone's board works didn't get any?
Okay, but, uh, but. February twenty first. When did you get appointed clerk treasurer?
See, that was the fourteenth, I believe.
Uh, February?
Oh, no, let's see, hold on a second.
It would have been, uh.
It was March the seventh.
Yeah.
March the seventh?
Yeah.
Jesse, um, came to the meeting for me because I couldn't make it.
Okay, gotcha, I remember that now, okay, thank you for the clarification. All right.
When can we expect the financial reports to?
Something up to date. Really, I'll be honest with you, it depends on when I can get everything accumulated, get the bills paid, right now I'm putting out little fires here and there. I did get, uh, our credit cards back, um, where we're solving our credit cards now. Uh, we did get a lot of bills paid, uh, we're not gonna have to worry about the lights being shut off by public service. Sprint's been paid, uh, let's see, I think we're, you took care of the sprints, so, all right, so we, we're getting there, you're just taking time.
You said lights were about to be shut on?
No, no, we paid the car.
Oh, he paid the light bill.
They're, they're, they've been taken care of.
But they were about to be shut off, as we said.
They, they, they weren't, they were in arrears, but they weren't about to be shut off, no. In fact, I, I don't know why, but some of those late payments, they didn't charge us late payment fees.
Well, but let's go back to the minutes, under claimed, councilman Shortridge questioned why COVID money was used for the electric bills.
That was before Steve took over.
All right.
It was used to pay two months of electric bills.
But why were they in arrears and they're shut off?
I wanna know why, I still didn't get an answer why the COVID money was used to pay two months of electric bills.
The only person who can answer that question didn't hear tonight. I had nothing to do with it, I don't write the checks.
Had to be approved by somebody.
I didn't prove.
No, it wasn't approved by anybody until after the pack, cause that was the beef about making the motion after the pack. Money was never.
That was approved in two thousand.
Huh?
That was, that was approved in two thousand.
What was approved in two thousand?
This is twenty twenty-three, we mean two thousand.
I was hearing two thousand, okay? The clerk was having trouble paying the bills that were due on a certain date, so we authorized her by ordinance, it's in the book, to go ahead and pay certain bills ahead of the meeting so that they wouldn't be, be late.
Okay, but COVID money was supposed to have been approved to be appropriated before any of it was spent, and it was spent, and then we approved the appropriation.
Well, that was the way with all the COVID money, there's supposed to be a board put together to, to approve of the COVID money spending.
Well, there is now.
Put together.
Check. Yes. The item he's talking about, wasn't that on the three hundred thousand dollar sheet that we approved late?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, in all honesty, we were almost one day away from getting the fire department electricity shut off. Am I correct, Patty? So, the bills weren't being paid?
Just not.
I just, I mean, you sat there and said the bills were paid and that's what was the link, yes, it was.
We were authorized, we authorized her to pay the bills.
Well, yeah, she did.
I, I can't say either way, she's not here to defend herself.
I can't either, I'm just saying what I know and what he can tell you, uh, we were ten thousand dollars overdrawn.
So how much was the lapse between Lori leaving and Steve coming?
Pardon?
How lo, how much of a lapse was it between Lori leaving and Steve coming?
Her last day, I think, was February fifteenth?
Mm-hmm.
So that was less than mine? Right?
I, you never were notified, were you there?
No. That's supposedly her last work day.
And who sat in for those twenty days?
I did.
Probably a lot of paperwork to go through, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
Pardon, as Steve can tell, there's quite a bit of paperwork in there.
Still buried in the paperwork.
Yeah, and he's had Keystone in here two days?
Keystone in there two days, I've been on the phone with him, uh, a couple of days too, so today particularly, getting this together and, uh.
I think the city attorney helped you one day.
That's right, we, uh, we look for folders and.
We should look that up, because what he's talking about happened under Ron Shepard, Deanna James, I remember that.
I'm sorry.
The, with the ordinance he's referring to, I remember, happened during Ron Shepard and Deanna James. Cause I remember my dad getting involved in that, they authorized me to pay standard monthly billing ahead of time before the appropriations was made.
Oh, yeah.
That is true, but the deal on the, is being questioned here is Mr. Shortridge has a valid point, why was COVID money used for electric bills when there was supposed to be money in the account to pay the electric bills, so, and that's a situation where money was spent out of that fund that actually had been used for something else.
Without being appropriated.
Without being appropriated, if she would've just paid the electric bills out of the account, they're supposed to be paid out of, there wouldn't have been a question, but the fact is, the bills were paid out of the COVID thing before we approved the transfer, and that makes it look funny. But, I mean, that's neither here nor there, you gotta pay your bills, but that is what, as near as anybody configured without being able to question the source, they were paid out of the COVID money without telling anybody. Have an answer for that.
I haven't, I, nobody does, Marty doesn't sign right now.
And then you're a full sheet, so you got a COVID funds ahead of time, wasn't there?
No. If, no, not that, if not that wasn't previously approved to be appropriate, and that was that, that one time, none of that was approved until after it was spent, and we came in and approved the money.
Well, that happened on that building on that, on A Street, it never was approved by us, and it was built, and then we had to approve the money to pay for it.
I'm saying the electric was on that, when you're talking about the long thing, that wasn't, I was just asking, it was on that long one?
Yes, yes.
True.
It was on that same one that has the A Street thing and all these other things.
I understand that, but what I'm saying, that's okay. Um, how far behind are the bills, or how far behind were some of the bills when you went in?
We had some three months behind, um, but, I mean, there's nowhere around it, I mean, it isn't black and white, so.
So, three months in arrears for some?
Well, you gotta count this one too, I mean, I'm.
Well, yeah, I know, and I understand that, Steve, but I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Okay. On the minutes, I just, I don't like the way this is said, that I acknowledge we received finance, the pa, financial packet because we didn't get a financial packet last month.
I don't mean to argue with you, John, but I, I clarified that when you said it, when you made the motion, I clarified that we are receiving but not approving, so maybe we need to add the word "but not approved", cause that was a clarification, maybe you made the motion.
Yeah, but we didn't even receive.
We didn't receive the packet.
Yeah, we did.
That last month. We didn't have any, no.
Didn't have, board of works?
Board of works, uh.
Can I speak?
Cable.
The only thing that I gave to you were like fund balances and appropriation balances and things like that, the only thing that I knew how to run, so maybe that's what you're talking about.
Okay, so that's, yeah.
We didn't get this last month.
What is that?
You're talking about, John?
Accounts payable, whole point.
Yeah, and, but we didn't get claims last month.
Well, then let's just strike, cause I thought we got a full packet, I said we put that some financial information was received, just edit it, and then you have to make a motion to defer these minutes. Yeah. And if you wanna write down what we excluded, we know accounts payable, that's what your question was.
Do you understand what we're talking about, Steve?
Right, and that, what we're doing is clarifying this in the minutes for this meeting.
No, I'm talking about the preauthorization.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're gonna approve these minutes.
Where you're authorized to pay the bills as they come in and not wait till the next meeting?
Right.
Because then they'll delay changes.
Yeah.
We, we authorized that in two thousand.
But that's, you know, if we're gonna approve these minutes with the change.
Yes.
That's what he's asking, so you're gonna rewrite these with our approval?
No, what I'm gonna do is clarify in the, the, tonight's meetings, tonight's minutes, I should say, and then that will, the way I understand it, when you, the meeting, the minutes are set in stone basically, you clarify them with the meeting, with the minutes to this meeting, so if there's a change, it's noted in the, in this, these minutes.
I don't know, I thought it was the other way around, but.
I mean, I could clarify.
We can clarify that later, yeah.
Whatever you wanna do, I mean, I, I mean, it, it's up to you guys. Oh, the judge is here. I would note them in this, in these minutes.
Yeah.
And approve them with the change.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where I think we should go. Then you might note something in your minutes that, you know, changes were made on previous minutes.
Okay.
I'm like, most of me approved the minutes with changes.
Did you second? I did.
And I might clarify too, I should have the minutes printed out for the next meeting as opposed to putting them on the CD like we did. Thanks, Steve. You both?
Yeah. I motioned, he remarked second.
Oh, okay, we've got a person second to say, the minutes with the change. With no financial packet. Rule call, vote please.
J T?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, John?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Marty?
Yep.
Okay, now, next you do have accounts payable here, um, the board of works should've gotten this also, but they didn't. If I give you this, Patty, we're gonna, a couple copies of, since they're both still here. I think they are.
Do we wear a printer as well as a copier?
Mm-hmm, it's the, what it's saying.
Oh, okay.
And one thing I might interject too, on this report, and interest in brevity and transparency, you'll note that this is dated today's date. What I did, I ran what we had, and what we have and what you got, basically, that's kind of the bottom line. Also, the state board of accounts has recommended and asked that we use this form, unfortunately, the copier barked and did whatever it did, and the last page was not printed. Last page contains signature lines for all of the department heads, and, uh, according to state board of accounts, it is now required that we get signatures from all the department heads on, on the, uh, financial reports. And honestly, I, from what I understand, it's been that way since last year sometime, so.
Yeah, yeah, we've always got them.
Okay.
Only because I've had phone calls. Okay, I'm not trying to disturb.
Pardon?
I'm not trying to disturb, only because I've had phone calls. Cindy, all these trees that are on here, these were all, had some sort of storm damage?
I don't have a idea, I've not seen those.
Uh, Tenth and Anderson.
I have a copy of those.
Okay, Tenth and Anderson, Ninth and Anderson.
Tenth and Anderson and Ninth and Anderson is taken out for the project.
Taken out for the project, okay, and seven forty-three South Sixth Street? Oh, there, just take that back, um, it says two trees by Co-op.
Yes, that Co-op paid half for those trees.
And they were, but they were damaged in some way, or?
They were rotten.
Okay.
Should've kinda, unsafe building.
Are we rerouting traffic down Tenth Street, or?
Yeah, they did.
For what?
For Ninth Street project?
That'll be up to whites.
Huh?
That'll be up to whites. They'll tell us how to do it.
But the tree at Tenth and Anderson was dangerous.
Yeah, it was rotten.
Okay.
All the way down the center. It's lucky it didn't fall on that storm.
That's a problem with all these soft-wooded trees that the city's overpopulated with, they're, they look fine from outside, but the, the carpenter ants, they're gone inside.
That one there was, that one was unbelievable.
Is that the one on Ninth Street that I saw?
We took out two on Ninth, we took out the one there at Ninth and Anderson, and then we took the one out by.
Oh.
Uh, by DJ's mom's.
Ninth and Old.
Yeah.
Yeah, the Anderson one I saw, there was nothing left.
Anderson was rotten in the middle.
Yeah, there's nothing left in the center.
Wow.
I, I think going forward, the city should have some kind of saying, what's planted in the tree rows, because there's a lot of things planted in the tree rows that don't really, they aren't good trees.
A lot of customers don't realize they are responsible for those trees. We do try to help them out.
Yeah.
You know, if they bring it to our attention, we do help, help them out, but they still, there's a lot of, I just.
There's a lot of trees that are in it, are a hundred years old, and people live there now, didn't plant them.
Right.
Yeah, I was there that day, we were working on Ninth Street and Anderson, and you guys were hustling, I thought it was storm.
We took three trees down today.
I thought it was storm and blocking the road, and somebody called, because of course nobody wants our trees cut down, so, I'm getting the question, why are all the trees being cut down?
Doesn't cut down for the project.
Yeah, we have our answer. Storm and rock and project.
Would it be too much trouble to take pictures of these trees next time, though, if somebody?
I have pictures on my phone.
Okay, so.
Just, just about everywhere that he has taken out, we're gonna have pictures.
So that we can justify to people that are concerned why their trees aren't getting cut down, that these trees were rotten.
The two we took down today were rotten in the center, and they were right by the school.
They were on the corner of Eighth and Blackman.
Right where the teachers parked out.
Make a motion that we acknowledge receipt, or acknowledge being given an accounts payable register dated March twenty-first, shows. Been paid out for the last two and a half months.
I'll second it. Kind of person second, so it's set the accounts payable register. Rule call, vote please.
J T?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
And Marty?
Yep.
Okay, next, I don't have, uh, anything under old business. Under new business, you've got a ordinance here, this ordinance three dash twenty twenty-three dash one, fixing compensation for employees for the year twenty twenty-three, be it ordained by the common council of the city of Clinton, Indiana, that one, beginning April first, twenty twenty-three, the salaries and pay schedule of certain appointed officers and employees of the city of Clinton shall amend it to be fixed as follows, city workforce amount, the court clerk fifteen eighty-four now, to all other salaries and compensation amounts set by that ordinance eleven twenty twenty-two dash two shall amend in full force and effect. It passed on the first read, will be passed this twenty-first day of March twenty twenty-three, and I ask the, uh, city attorney to be here tonight because this is, uh, this person is in his office here in City Hall.
Yeah, what, what we're trying to do is just raise the court clerk's salary to that of the utility clerk. The court clerk is now Marissa Stoffel, effective yesterday, so her and Vicki, she was part-time with Vicki being the full-time person, and now it's switched, and now Vicki's gonna kind of fade out, uh, over the course of this year. Uh, Marissa's not gonna be on the insurance, Vicki will be coming off the insurance, so from a budget standpoint, it's really not gonna cost the city more to, to, uh, get that salary in line with the utility clerk, plus with Vicki going to part-time for some part of this year, uh, her salary was actually more anyway due to longevity, so that's all we're trying to do, is get it in line with the utility clerks, and Marissa doesn't have any longevity at this point because her back time doesn't count because it's not consecutive, so that would just be her hourly wage.
Is this common for, to, to do like this? Is this common? Cause she knew what the job paid when she took it. That's the excuse they give to the police when they get shot at.
EJ, it's your department, you wanna?
Is it, is it common? I don't know, I mean, it's been attempted to be done before here, so, I don't know that that makes it uncommon.
Yeah, it was killed each time. Here's the, here's the original ordinance right here, that it was passed on, it's got everybody's signature on the back of it. What was the scale before?
The scale before?
Thirteen ninety-seven.
According to the. It was thirteen ninety-seven is what she's, what she was at, so it's a dollar, dollar eighty-seven more an hour?
Now, is that, that thirteen ninety-seven, is that what was originally approved for twenty twenty-three?
Yes, that's what was originally approved for twenty twenty-three, yes, now how that compares to twenty twenty-two, I'm not, I'm not sure on hand.
All right, then the second question I would have, you're saying that Marissa is not gonna have, be covered by health insurance?
No.
So how much is that an hour?
How much is that an hour? I don't know what the.
It's usually half, if you take by a year, it's about eighteen thousand a year is what we pay for an employee for insurance.
So.
Employees, around eighteen thousand a year.
So we'd stand to save that eighteen thousand?
If that's what the number is.
Yeah, it is.
I don't know on hand what.
Close anyway.
Is that gonna be clarified, that she won't be on ins, on the city insurance, cause if you give her this extra two bucks an hour, and then next week she decides to go on the city insurance at eighteen thousand dollars a year?
Eight sixty-five an hour. Sixty-five, sorry, eight sixty-five an hour, I believe.
Oh, it was what, the?
Eighteen thousand.
Yeah, I mean, obviously that would include her from forever not going on the insurance.
Well, that's the selling point here, the fact that she's not going on the insurance.
Is that the selling point?
Yeah, that's the way it looks to me.
Okay.
That the two dollar an hour increase is cause she's not gonna be on city insurance.
Well, I guess.
What does the utilities?
Yeah, what else did you say? You said the other thing too.
Then clerk.
Utilities clerk, and what else? You said.
It's the same as the utility clerk.
Get in alignment.
What, fifteen eighty-four?
The fifteen eighty-four, yes.
Is what the utility clerk.
Yeah, he's trying, he's trying to align all three clerks to have the same income, is what he's trying to do.
Cause the other clerks have insurance, so we're saving money.
Jesse's not on insurance.
Okay.
Jesse not by city insurance. Is that who you're talking about, Marty?
Well, it has.
And, uh, Jesse's not on city insurance.
She's not?
No.
We're the three, we got.
Here, you check.
Safety, nuisance, only, uh, utility, and, is that Patty? Mayors, AA, that's you? So that, we're aligning those three together.
So Patty's on union insurance, right? You're on Paul's insurance, right?
No, he's retired.
Huh, okay, so you're on city insurance, okay.
So we're aligning those four clerks together, two, three clerks in there.
I make a motion with, ordinance number three dash twenty twenty-three dash one.
That's, that's.
Right, right, it would be a law.
Yeah.
To approve ordinance three dash twenty twenty-three dash one, fixing compensation for employees for the year twenty twenty-three. Rule call, vote please.
J T? John?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Marty?
Did you say DJ wanted this to go into effect for April first?
Right, right, so there would be a couple weeks where.
Okay.
It wouldn't. I just wanted to fix something definitely on there.
Okay.
So it's not thought that it goes retro to January first.
Okay. So this is the first read, tonight will be the second read in April's meeting.
Since it was you and him, can't we get scared over with?
If you want to, we can, if you want to just make a motion.
Make a motion, we're just scared over with.
Done first, Bart second?
Yes.
To go ahead and do the second read, roll call vote on the first and second read?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Uh, Dean?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Marty? Yep.
Need a motion to go ahead and approve the second read?
I'll make a motion to approve the second read.
Second.
For first and second, roll call vote to approve the second read on ordinance three twenty twenty-three dash one.
JJ?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Marty?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
One thing I did have, I think, out of the council president is Walter with us, Steve is out of the clerk treasurer's position. Uh, does the council want to add to the agenda to vote on council president decision?
Yes.
And first and second to allow the council to add to the agenda, um, to vote for a council president to see if he's roll call vote.
JJ?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Bart?
Yes.
Marty?
I move that John Moore be appointed, um, council president for this year.
I'll second.
Got a first and second to appoint John Moore as council president, thanks to you.
JJ?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Marty? I'm sorry, Marty.
Oh, Marty.
Okay, we'll try that again.
Don't get long about him.
Yes. Bart?
Yes, Marty.
Okay, does any of the council have any comments at this time?
Yes, a question about the camera installation for the live feeds, do we have a date yet?
I'm sorry.
The camera installation for the live feeds, do we have a date?
Yes.
They are, everything's ordered, it is slowly starting to trickle in.
Okay.
Um, I think the camera should be delivered sometime this week, the two cameras. And then the iPad later this month. But they said that they could get the cameras and everything working off of a spare iPad. And once we get the iPad in, we could transfer it over to the Apple iPad, we have for the city.
That sounds good, thank you.
So it is all ordered. I've got a nice little stack going in my office right now.
So he's having ordering delays?
Well, I ordered it all to the city's.
I'm saying.
Pages and it's just. I don't want to think it's slowly trickled in, when it trickles in by.
Okay.
Amazon and everything else you order from.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else have it yet, but the audience, anybody have anything?
Um, I have one quick question, we presented you guys a, uh, proposal for raises for the police department. I didn't know where we were standing with that.
For what?
The police department pay raises.
Oh, this is up to me to get them or not?
Well, the committee was created, me and Steve talked, um, obviously talked with you.
Right.
And I mean, there wasn't any money in there, so I think Steve is now in a position where he can see if he can find some. So we actually talked about that this week. But, yeah, we didn't have, I mean, if that's all the information we get, then I mean, there's nowhere to get money out of that. So we got to find out.
And I was just.
What's on the backside of that number that we're not seeing on here, just like we said at the meeting. So I think we're just waiting for him to get in place and we'll continue that project.
That brings up a question. That was a, a, um, committee of the council president, which was Steve and Bart. And then John was going to be on there if that was permissible, the attorney, it was okay to three member commission. And he didn't approve the three member.
He didn't, well, he, he approved three, but just two at a time, right?
Well, he said it couldn't be, it couldn't be three council people.
Yeah, okay.
What he said, it would be just two.
So where does that put us now? Who's on the committee?
Well.
Who's on first, what's on second?
Same committee, John, Bart, Steve.
I was going to say, let me interject, comment, because I think I made a stipulation that if, that there was a problem that with me being on it or, uh, Bart. But I thi- I think I was looking more at myself than we were going to pick John up on a, to make sure he was on it. So he's a financial whiz, so I mean, let's face it.
Okay, but then, uh, then that brings up the next question. Until you get things caught up, you know, we don't really know where we're at. Financially wise. Because we don't know what we had at the end of the year for policy sure. And then the department heads, you guys are behind on knowing where you're at as far as.
We haven't seen us anything for two months.
So it's not forgotten, don't get me wrong, but until we find out for sure where we're at financially, it's kind of hard to. Move forward, if you know what I mean.
Yes, sir.
And I still say that the idea that you guys had about the stipends for the extra certifications and extra education. That would be an easy way.
To start.
To start.
So since you said that you want it to be councilman, is that what I'm understanding?
Do what?
You want it to be councilman on the committee?
To council.
Okay, that would be you and me, because you were the original third, and then now he can participate as a treasurer.
Right.
So it's going to be me and you as a commission.
So it's two.
And then.
Yes, it's not a voting member.
We are advisor.
Yeah, but we wa- we can't really vote, all we can do is talk and then whatever we decide.
Yeah, I understand if the qualification was that, that we couldn't have three voting members and so that's, I'm no longer able to vote, then.
Yep, that's right.
Okay.
There, there doesn't have to be a lot of.
Me and you, and then we bring back presentations, yeah, okay.
There has to be a lot of emphasis put into qualifications of the police officers under stipends.
Well, because when he did that one worksheet, he had all these extra deals of some of the guys are qualified to do. And that to me at the time was an easy way to get some people some extra money.
Well, that, that's what's done in, in all business all over the world, the higher your qualifications are, the more money you make. Lilly does it, uh, the operators union does it, right?
Yeah, they do.
No, they don't.
No, they don't.
If you're certified for high crane operation, then you make more than.
No, you don't, not, the only time you make more is if you're running a high crane. But I could, I had certifications at the Indian Gang. The only time I got the extra money was if I was running something with a boom log and a hundred and fifty foot.
Well, that's extra money, that's more money than you said it was.
When I was running something with less than a hundred and fifty foot, even though I had the certifications for over a hundred and fifty, the over two hundred, I only got. What I was paid for.
Because other, other departments that they could look at as police officers with their qualifications, they, they pay on there. With qualifications.
Then the second thing about all this too is. Once we figure out something to do with the police department, we've still got other departments that we need to try to find some way of bringing our compensation up. Because we've got some good people, we'd like to keep them. And. Lord knows, some of them work their panties off.
Oh, yeah.
So for the record, these are the two with the input from the clerk treasurer when the all clear season is given.
And I think we still have twenty twenty-two that's not closed out, is that correct?
Right.
We need to get twenty twenty-two closed out, I think, I agree that we need to give everybody what we can, but we need to make sure that twenty twenty-two.
Yes, I know. Where we're at.
Got to play with.
Did you lose an officer the other day?
What?
Did you guys lose an officer the other day?
Uh, Officer Anderson resigned back in January. He went to Rockville, and then we just, uh, hired, did a hiring process, um, last week for an officer.
Okay, but you lost one.
Back in January.
Okay, for more money?
Yes.
Okay.
I can't blame you.
Hope I can.
And that's what we, we expressed to him when he told us, because he told us he was applying before, asking, we're not holding you back for bettering you and your family, so.
Well, I believe that's the only reason he was.
Yes, correct.
Uh, like Marty said, I don't blame you, you got to go, make the money.
Okay.
Does anyone else have anything? If not, I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.